Dear colleagues from all over Europe, welcome to another Erasmus Go digital town hall meeting. We are very glad to see you here, registered and attending this event. That it's aimed to give you the floor, to give you the floor to share with us all the feedback that you have, your concerns, your questions about the Erasmus Student Card Initiative implementation. So today, as always, many good colleagues are here with us to answer to these questions live. So I would start with our colleagues from DJI ACH, from the European Commission, Alexandra Lee and Bruno de Oliveira Alves. Also with us is Victor Aguilar Mentes. We have also colleagues from the WEP Consortium, colleague Paul Leys, policy advisor. Also, we have Daiga Kuzmane with us. I forgot to mention from the DJI colleagues, sorry for that, Harpa Sifa, Arnaud Dohter, EWP Relationship Manager, also colleagues again from the WEP Consortium, Janina Minserda-Skiewicz, and colleagues from the Erasmus Student Card, also implementation, Antonio Saeiro and Yasmin Castro from NTB Data. So I hope that I'm not forgetting someone. I think that we should probably set the objectives for today's meeting, for today's town hall meeting, which is first of all to address key topics that have been raised through the EWP user groups and help us prepare this event. So all your questions that have been shared in the EWP user groups will be addressed today. Also to have a high level discussion about your needs and how you see this initiative move forward, the direction that it should go or it goes. And of course, to do that, we strongly encourage you to take the floor during this event and not only use the Q and A functionality that is available. As you see, it's not possible for you to write in the chat. There is a Q and A functionality that you can use for your written questions. Although, as I mentioned, we encourage you to take the floor. And of course, keep in mind that this town hall meeting, it's not a forum for specific technical questions you might have, technical challenges that you might face during the implementation. So for this one, is either the ESC service desk, the Erasmus Student Card Initiative service desk, and you will find a link in the chat, or your software provider, if you are using a third-party provider, so you can contact them so as to solve these specific questions and issues that you face. So without further ado, I'm going to give the floor to Alexandra to explain us the priorities for 2024. So Alexandra, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Nikos, and welcome to everyone. It's great to see so many participants. And as we, I think it's an excellent opportunity to also to reiterate our priorities for 2024, what will be our focus this year. So first of all, as you all know, we have been deploying the IEA version seven, so updates for the inter-institutional agreements. And a lot of effort have been done from the team in Warsaw, from providers, from in-house systems. So this is the top priority for this year, to ensure that every HI has access to this last updated version of IEA. And now, of course, another very important priority we have is to increase the exchanges on EWP network and especially to have a higher number of learning agreements concluded digitally. So of course, for this, there is a need to have more support for you. And this is exactly what we have in our planning, to continue to work closely with you, to shape the future, to provide you the targeted support which is necessary. Another goal that we have is to accelerate the adoption of the SC of the European Student Identifier that will be available, should be available to all mobile students and eventually also to all students in program countries. And of course, as I mentioned before, we aim to continue the close collaboration we have with all of you in the institutions to shape the future of the initiative and to shape the future of the program with the goal to simplify procedures and to implement the once-only data entry for students and for staff.
Thank you very much Alexandra for this update about the priorities for 2027. And now the floor goes to Harpa to give us, and Paul probably also, that will give us more details about the hot topic of the IEI version seven. Harpa, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. So as you may remember, some of you, in the last Erasmus Go digital webinar, there was a suggestion from some of you, well, there was a suggestion from one colleague and many of you uploaded it during the webinar, to, before we start the discussion with you here today, to just see what are the most pressing issues and if we could clarify them a little bit so that we can maybe then focus the discussion more on, you know, the overall direction of the initiative and your general needs so that we can have a structured dialogue with all of you. So just what I wanted to say here is that the version seven did clarify standards and add standards for specific management issues of IAAs that were missing from the network. Now that we have clarified these standards and implemented the clear standards that were needed, there is still room, of course, to further simplify the process of the IAAs. There have been, some of you that reported in the EWP user groups that there are still some complexities around managing IAAs. And a key issue that has been brought up is, for example, the language requirements. So I think Paul here, I wanted to give you the floor, if you could maybe comment a little bit about the language requirement, because this was a topic that was brought up in the EWP user groups. And then I will continue.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Harpa. And with the new version of IAAs, indeed, language requirements became mandatory for student mobility, for students, for studies and staff mobility, for teaching. Now, in the implementation, the technical implementation, it turned out that the language requirements not only need to be there at the moment of approval, but already at the first initiation of the agreement. And of course, from a practitioner's view, this might complicate the things a little bit because you not only need to be aware about your own language requirements, but also about the language requirements from your partner. My advice, or how I would approach this, is to, if you don't know for sure the language requirements from your partner, to, for example, indicate an English B2. And then later on in the process, the partner can easily change that field towards the right language. In many cases, it is an English B2, I would say. But of course, in other cases, that's not the case. So then the partner can just correct the language on their side. It's being sent back and like that. It depends a little bit on the local implementation. It might be updated automatically on your site or not. That's part of the local implementation. But in doing so, we don't need to spend a lot of time and energy contacting the partner, like, okay, what's your exact language requirement? It can be exchanged via EWP in that way. But like you said, Harpa, the process itself, some additional functionalities have been added to the current API. But it goes without saying that both on the side of the consortium and the side of DJI ACH, everybody's on the same page that the process to get to an approved IEA is not yet optimal. So we need to do further analysis. We need to gather more opinions from the community on how we can further improve this aspect of exchanges via EWP.
Thank you so much, Paul, for explaining how we can handle this situation. And also just to say again that the IEA user guide that is available on the ESC portal, it already includes information that are related to version seven. And we can take a look and see if any further guidance needs to be added to those documents following this release. So please, if you have encountered any issues after version seven, we would greatly appreciate it if you could take the time and properly report them in the service desk. It helps a lot to resolve issues and make sure that we can address such things as quickly as possible. And also another thing that is very important to just reiterate is that all of the agreements that you have approved with your partners before this update, regardless of whether you did it through EWP or you have done it through some other means, through email or whatever, those agreements remain perfectly valid to use for mobility. And now we are monitoring, of course, very carefully how all of the systems are progressing in terms of concluding these updates, testing and going into production so that the new functionality becomes available to you. And last we checked, it's around 25 systems that have already updated to version seven. Several, around 20 in-house systems are still in the process of updating and concluding the tests. But it seems that most institutions are aiming to test and conclude the updates in May. So quite soon, we should have an overwhelming majority of users exchanging IAAs in the new version. So if we can go to the next slide, I think we will turn our attention to another hot topic, one of the most frequently raised in the user groups, and that was the topics of nominations. Many of you are wondering, what is the state of play of nominations? What should we expect? Where are we heading? And this is, of course, a fundamental topic that we need to discuss very carefully with the entire community. Because of course, here, the nominations and the transcript of records, these are not processes that come with the standard template from the program. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done to consult the communities, to make sure that we find the optimal approach that can fit the needs of most universities so that we can streamline and standardize these processes. But I think Alex here, you wanted to comment a little bit on the state of play of nominations and what universities can expect now.
Yes, thanks, Harpa. So indeed, what is the state of play of nominations? What can you expect? As you might know, we have been going through a very wide consultation regarding the mandatory business requirements. So what are the requirements necessary in order to implement nominations in terms of the template, but also how it is done in your institutions? And we have learned various information that will, of course, help us to redefine the way that nominations are defined in the business specification. Now, the mandatory business requirements, the business specifications are ready for publication and you can find them in the next ESC newsletter. But what does it mean for you? Does it mean that we all run and implement nominations in EWP? Well, not yet. So first, this mandatory business requirements that will be published, that can serve you and we highly suggest you to take a look at them. And they can serve you as information, as information for your institution to prepare, to take a look, what is the process of nomination now in my institution? How can I simplify it? How can I make it compatible with the business specification? Of course, we will have further, the user requirements that will inform further technical discussions. So from your feedback, we will need to have discussions upon, discussions with providers, with in-house systems. So how do we implement this nomination on a technical level? Because as we know, in various institutions, various systems are used. And of course, the idea is to have an extensive testing and validation by you, by the users, before we have the nominations in wide adoption, in the release which is available in wide for everyone. So this to be said, the timeline is not yet defined. And for this year, as I mentioned before, we'll focus on IAAs and on LAs. And that will be the focus until 2025. Now, again, does it mean that you cannot take a look at the mandatory business requirements? No, absolutely not. Take a look at them, try to see what is the process in your institution and how you can simplify it. And already, that might be interesting to take a look also, to have your feedback on the mandatory business requirements and also suggestions and how it can be better implemented on a technical level. So this is from my side. And I pass the floor to my colleagues.
Yes, thank you, Alex. Now, I just wanted to, even though, like Alex explained, there's still a lot of work to be done. The technical implementation is still being defined. But I'm quite sure that you're interested to hear what are the main outcomes of the consultations that are now reflected in the mandatory business requirements. So if you could go to the next slide. Well, first of all, I want to say simply thank you to everyone that have participated in all of the consultations and discussions around nominations. And I must say, you don't make it easy to define a very clear standard process that is, you know, what everybody would have wanted. Of course, each institution, to some extent, has their own views on nomination and their own practice. So it's not, we cannot define a process that completely 100% captures how things are done currently in your institution. But through getting feedback from many, many, many universities and discussing in the user groups and in the business process owner forum and also with the EWP champions, there is a certain picture that has now emerged and some key conclusions that have been taken away from the consultation. And I wanted to just briefly mention these to you today. And maybe you can then take the floor later and express your views on this, if this, you know, mirrors how you would see the situation or not. But a key takeaway is that universities are autonomous in their internal selection procedures. So that needs to continue, that universities can define what is their own process for internally selecting the students and what data you collect from your students as part of your internal selection process. However, in order for the nominations to actually work, there needs to be a minimum dataset that everyone can exchange and is available in all systems. So here, the landscape is actually quite different. There is sometimes universities that say some information is essential and then the sending partner says, we don't have this information readily available. So I think the key thing that you can take a look at in the nominations mandatory business requirement is what is the common dataset that we have now defined with the community? And if that is not aligned with your current practices today, there needs to be, you know, an adaptation made to those processes in order for them to work. Of course, it's very important that in order for you to actually enroll the exchange student, you need to have the possibility to have a formal application process afterwards, where at that stage, you can request from the student any additional data you might need to conclude that process in your institution. So here is a key conclusion, that the nomination is also separate from the actual formal application process, if you have that in your institution. There are some institutions that can take the nomination dataset and more or less conclude the process with that. There are others that need more information and need to be able to require that from the student at a later stage. So this is the key conclusion, that for now, nominations need to be a minimal necessary dataset to just nominate the student on the basis of an IEA with sufficient information for the receiving partners to confirm this is acceptable to them and then from there, take the process further. There is also a clear issue of mapping data. It's very important when you're receiving nominations that you can very easily map those nominations to a specific inter-institutional agreement that is coming through. And also, there is a need to be able to match that nomination dataset later on with incoming learning agreements and other documents that might arise from the application process. So the European Student Identifier and identifiers for inter-institutional agreements will need to play probably a much stronger role in the future to be able to ensure that this process is smooth. So here, issuing the European Student Identifiers and continuing to work towards having inter-institutional agreements in EWP is paving the way to have a smooth nomination process in the future. Now, a lot of you said that it's very important to have uniform statuses across systems. And it's not just about sharing the nomination data with the partner and waiting for them to formally approve or reject the nomination. There's also a need to be, to have assurance that the data has been retrieved from your system, in the partner system, so that you know that the nomination has actually gone through. There needs to be a way to minimize the temptation, if you will, of emailing your partners to check if the nomination has been received. So this came very clearly through in the consultation and is reflected in the mandatory business requirements. There were also many universities that said for them, they don't want to, at least not at this stage, link nominations very concretely with the application, of the internal application, that they would prefer to be able to have a CVS file that they could upload to the system at the point in time when they are ready to nominate. So this is a point that we have noted and is something that will reflect our discussions internally on further developments. And then also, there is a key aspect here, which is, in order to actually minimize the dataset, there needs to be a certain amount of trust between the partners. For example, should we include already at the nomination stage information about, you know, language requirements or level of studies and things like that? Or, you know, grades and things like that? Some universities do ask for that kind of information to ensure that the nominations are in line with IEA. But here, in order to minimize the dataset, there needs to be a foundational trust that the sending institution is selecting students on the basis of what has been stipulated in the IAAs. I'm sorry that I took a bit of time on this, but I think that this is something important for the community to be aware of and maybe something that would be an interest to discuss further. So I'll stop here now and pass the floor back to Alex.
Thanks a lot, Harpa. So when we look at the next slide, when we look also at further consultations that we had with the community and for another process that is now available as an early release, is a transcript of record. And I would like to inform you, what is the state of play of this process? So similar to nominations, there was an extensive consultation with the community, with the users, trying to understand what, how is this process implemented in the institutions? What are the requirements? And how we can shape the mandatory business requirements that will reflect also the way it is implemented among institutions? So the mandatory business requirements are now ready to be shared with you and they will be published in the new ESC newsletter. But what does it mean? It means that the transcript of record, the way it is now available on the network is an early release and it remains voluntary process available as a part of this early release, which means you can go, you can explore it, you can take a look, you can provide your feedback. You can take a look also at the mandatory business requirements and see what will be exactly necessary to adapt in your institution, maybe how you can simplify the process in your institution. But it doesn't mean that we are running and implementing it on a wide scale and make it, ask all the community to engage in deploying the transcript of record. Why? Because we're still in an early release phase and we understand that we need some time for wide adoption. There is a need to also to consult a technical expert. So the developers on how exactly can we link the transcript of record as we understand it's mainly done within the systems which are not a part of the international office. So there is still a lot of work to be done there. And this is why I will say again what I have said before, the focus this year and until 2025 remains on LAs, IAAs and SC. And the wide adoption for transcript of record is not yet defined. So we invite you to take a look, we invite you to provide your feedback and to stay tuned for future developments, while at the same time to focus on LAs and IAAs.
Thanks, Alex. And then I think we just have one more slide on this topic. Just a quick summary about the key outcomes of the community consultations on transcript of records, which are also reflected in the mandatory business requirements. And this is that indeed, there is a need to have a flexible approach in terms of how transcript of records can be exchanged through EWP. So this is something that is specified quite clearly. There needs to be, you know, different scenarios that are covered by EWP. Some universities, of course, have only a handful of student mobilities and for them, a simplified process where, for example, adding information to the dashboard can be sufficient to pass on the grades on behalf of the university. But there is also a need to maybe connect to in-house systems or even national level systems. So this is, I would say, a key outcome of the consultation, that we need a flexibility here in the process in terms of different ways of exchanging transcript of records. And the recognition process as such is not in scope of EWP. The main focus is to find a way to more easily share the transcript of records between institutions so that it can make processes more efficient and easier to keep track of the learning outcomes of students, but not to, in any way, shape or form, automate the recognition process itself. And of course, as Alex said, I mean, we've seen that this is more challenging to implement the nominations and we will need sufficient time to really prepare for this reality. But having mandatory business requirements that are available at this stage to the community can hopefully be a good tool to take a step forward in that direction with everyone having something to reflect on now collectively as we look towards the future. And also just to say that another thing that came through is that it would be quite important to have the option always to share PDFs also in EWP, if that is something that's useful to share the transcript of records between partners. But I'm not going to spend any more time on this. I think we can conclude it here. And I think I pass the floor on to Nikos again, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Harpa and Alex, for all these details about the nominations and transcript of record updates. So for all you, dear attendees, participants, to stay informed about all these topics, because you see that this is a work in progress and there are many things to be discussed and to expect for your feedback, please join the Please join the ASCII newsletter. You can find in shortly, in the chat, the link to sign up for the newsletter. And also, please do join us also on the next, in the next Erasmus Go digital webinar on the 4th of May, so save the date. Fourteenth, sorry, 14th May, so save the date. And we will also share the registration link in the chat for all you to register and to join there for more updates. So I think that we can go straight to your questions. And as mentioned, it's going to be, it's a town hall meeting, so it's, first of all, you're, you're taking the floor and asking questions live. We have some questions in the Q and A. I already see a colleague raising his hand. I see that he's Greek, Kostas Vitsios. So Kostas, the floor is yours to have your question. Good morning. I think you can unmute yourself now. I also sent a request. Can you hear us? No, we cannot hear you. You're trying to unmute yourself. So until Kostas solves the problem probably he's facing, let's go to the next colleague. I see here Olivier Anthony. So I'm going to give the floor. No, just lowered his hand, I suppose. Please do raise your hand again, because you will allow me to give you the floor. Olivier? No? Okay, so for more colleagues to pose your questions, this is a town hall meeting, so the main aim is to give the floor to you and to discuss live the questions you already have in the Q and A section. So in the meantime, probably we can reply to some questions avoided. As we mentioned, and you already know probably, you can upvote questions. Okay, I see another colleague raising her hand, Eleftherias Kordalaki. So giving the floor to Eleftheria.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thank you. Regarding, I just have a question regarding the transcript of records. Will there be a possibility to include in the transcript of records on the OLS the description of the grading scale of each university? Because this is very, very important. Once we send out, we upload the information with the grades to upload the grading scales so for the colleagues in each university to make the conversion into their, their local system. This was a possibility with the paper version, but it is not anymore.
Okay, so a question. Yes, Paul, you can probably take up this one?
Yes, indeed, Nikos, and I think grade conversion is indeed a very important topic. It is, it is very clearly described in the ACDS Users Guide from 2015, so almost 10 years ago, I guess, how to use grade distribution tables. And in the, in the mandatory business requirements, this is indeed acknowledged that as part of the data to be exchanged via EWP, grade distribution information allowing to, to convert the grades should be included in the, in the data exchange via EWP. Of course, we can also take further steps towards making this as easy as possible for the community. But the, the vital piece of information is, is the, the grade distribution tables. And that's also the basis for, for the tool IGRACONS. And we can maybe imagine in the future on, on some automatic conversion taking place behind the scenes if this information is digitally available. So yes, indeed, it's part of the mandatory business requirements for the transcripts.
Thank you very much, Paul. I don't know, Eleftheria, I think that we have covered you on this.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for posing your question. So another colleague that wants to ask something to share the feedback. It's not only about questions, about providing feedback to the colleagues in DJAC and EWP plus consortium and colleagues from the Erasmus Student Car. So yes, Karim, I'm sorry about that last name. I will not pronounce it because I might say it badly. So Karim, the floor is yours for your question, if you hear us.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, perfectly.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry if my question may appear a little stupid, but I would like to know how long we're allowed to use paper versions for learning agreements? And also, my second question is concerning countries like the UK, which are not part of Europe anymore. Do we need to go online or not for learning agreements? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karim. First of all, I don't think, we all do not think that there are stupid questions. There are questions and we are all here to reply to them. So about the paper version of the learning agreements with who is going to, which one is going to take up? Yeah, Alexandra, the floor is yours.
Yes, so we're going to accept paper learning agreements as long as your partner is not ready. So of course, the, the goal is to exchange learning agreements digitally. And this year, we, we put all our efforts in providing support for institutions, working with developers, the, the relationship managers, working with, with the technical teams in order to provide 100% support and make forward, make many steps in order to really exchange all learning agreements digitally. But in case that your partner institution is not ready to exchange digitally, if there is no other way, you can exchange on paper. The idea is that students should not be excluded from mobility because the institutions are not yet, their institution or their host institution is not yet ready to, to exchange on EWP. Taking into consideration that this year we put a lot of effort in order to be, to, to promote the learning agreements being digitally exchanged, we hope that next year, next year, this question, we would not have this question, because all institutions will be able to exchange learning agreements digitally. But again, as mentioned, students and institutions should not be penalized for that. So if there is no other way, of course, yes, exchange on paper. Though we acknowledge this is not an optimal scenario, because it creates, it creates also some, it creates two ways of working for institutions on digital way and also on paper. But again, the, our goal, let's not forget, the goal is that students will go on mobility and participate in the program. The goal should be this, so we would do not exclude students and we do not put barriers. We should not put barriers for this.
Thank you very much, Alexandra. The second question about the UK partners. I probably think that it's self-evident answer that since they are not part of the Erasmus Plus program, they do not use Erasmus Plus infrastructure, so EWP. So I, I think it's almost conservative. So Alex, if you want to add something to that?
No, it's basically this. I mean, it's not a program country, so I don't see the need for them to, to join the infrastructure and the processes you had with them before can continue as before on paper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karim, for the, for the question. So I see that there is also another hand raised from Klaus Wassermann. So Klaus, the floor is yours now for your question.
Thank you. My name is Klaus Wassermann from Karl Landsteiner University in Krems, Austria. I am rather new in the international office at a university and I will be dealing with interinstitutional agreements in the future. And I just wanted to ask you what the timeline will be that the, that the digital version of the IIA process will be launched. Can you already do that? Or do we have to wait a little more? Or what's the state of play here? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Klaus. So the timeline, I think the DJAC colleagues probably, I don't know, Alexandra, Harpa or Bruno, whoever wants.
Sure, I can, I can start and then Harpa can complement and further explain. So for the I, your question is for the IIA is already available digitally, so it is already there. The new version, version seven, has been tested and successfully deployed by most of, of systems and the ones that are still not, it still, still did not perform the, the update and the, the release. They are currently doing so with the help of the team also. So it is already available digitally.
Thank you.
My colleagues want to add some elements.
Just to quickly complement, and this is relevant for, for everyone, that in terms of the version seven and the state of play of that API or any other API in EWP, this is something that you can see both in the stats portal and you can also see it on the testing website. So if you're wondering, is my system already tested and ready for version seven or any other process in EWP? There is a link that you can simply go to and check for yourself. Of course, we trust that your software provider keeps you informed of, of any updates, but if, if ever that question or doubt arises, there's a way for you to check that. And we can put in the link or in the chat, I think, a link to a news article where this is, these links are included, so you can check for yourself.
Thanks, Harpa. I think Paul has already put the link for newcomers in, in the chat. So Klaus, you will have all the information and resources you need there. I just wanted to add something from the Q and A section, because it's related to deadlines discussion. There is a question from Julian Horman about, I think, Alexandra, you mentioned that focus remains on IIA's, LAs and ESI until 2025. And so Julian is wondering whether this means until December 2024 or December 2025? So a clarification about the focus and 2025.
Sure, I can clarify this. So we go by year by year goals. So this is the focus for this year, for 2024. With, with time, we will approach 2025 and we will consult the community and we consult our colleagues and of course, set up the goals also for the upcoming year 2025. But meanwhile, as we do not have, we, we did not put any deadlines or any strong, yeah, so we did, we don't have any deadlines or we don't have any timeline ahead of us. So this is why we, we encourage you to focus on IAS, LAs and SI. And as for nominations and transcript of record, these, these remain as an early release this year and also probably the next year, so also probably 2025.
Okay, thank you, Alex, for the clarification. I think Klaus, you are covered probably, also with Paul's comment in the chat. So thank you very much for your question. Let's go to the next colleague, which is, who is Alexandra Priatna. So Alexandra, the floor is yours for your question.
Thank you, Nikolaus. My name is Alexandra Priatna. I am from Chalmers University of Technology in Sweden. So I have two issues that I would like to share with you. The first one is about the IIA function. So we are using a move-on platform. And previously, we have a function that's called Stop Sharing Agreement. And now the Stop Sharing has disappeared and replaced by a delete. However, the delete function is not as easy to use because it has to fulfill a certain requirement to be able for it to appear. I would like to suggest that maybe we can introduce back the Stop Sharing, because sometimes we would like to make an adjustment in agreement that we already shared and we want to make changes without affecting, you know, our current conditions as already agreed. The second thing is about ISCAT compatibility. So recently, I have experienced a problem of ISCAT compatibility or ISCAT number when we are using the IIA, the learning agreement and also the nomination. As we all know, that ISCAT number is very open to the interpretation of each university, is how we use it, what subject is related to each ISCAT number. And we cannot always have the same ISCAT for, you know, our, with our partner. So now the problem is like this. Let's say, I assume that my ISCAT is number one, but my partner assume the ISCAT for the same subject is number two. Then when I'm going to nominate my students in the online nomination, so even if I think my ISCAT is number one, but I need to nominate my students using their ISCAT number, which is number two. However, the problem is that when I'm making the learning agreement for my students, I need to have the ISCAT number one, because I need to report it in the beneficiary module according to the interpretation of the IIA, the I that I registered. So the ISCAT has to be the same with mine, but during the nomination, it has to be the same with the partner's interpretation. So right now, we are trying to, to solve it using a flexibility, of course. But however, I just would like to bring this so that we are all aware that it is coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alexandra. Although I probably assume that both questions have to do more about implementation from the third-party provider and not about the specifications of the network, but still, probably Yanina can answer to the first question about, yes?
Yes, exactly. I, I, I volunteered to answer the first one. This topic about hiding IIA's in the network was really discussed very heavily, because when we started talking about, yeah, we can need something like deletion, we had to differentiate between what hiding means and what deletion means. And in fact, providers agreed that hiding, just for some time, is very confusing for the partners, because what can the partner assume if at one day you try to grab IIA from the partner and it is there? And after two days, it is not. So what, what can you conclude? And the decision was made that this temporarily hiding of IIA's is not allowed because of introducing the confusion. And as I remember, there was really a minority of providers going, implementing it like that. And after very, very long and strong discussions, it was decided that the deletion is possible, but only and only before IIA's are mutually approved. So after they are mutually approved, you cannot delete them anymore. They have to stay. However, there are other options. You can terminate them. You can even terminate them as a whole if they never been activated, if they never been active, meaning no mobilities took place. Or if there were mobilities taking place during some years, you can just stop them starting from the next academic year. So there are some options, but hiding temporality is not anymore and will not be back.
Thank you very much, Yanina, for the detailed explanation. So Alexandra, I suppose you have to go back to your third-party provider for more. Paul, the second question, probably you are more appropriate to reply to that. The floor is yours.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Nikos. And I think this question also relates to the mandatory business requirements for, for nominations, because we need indeed to differentiate the field of education, the ISCAT field of education on the level of the agreement and maybe on the level of the students. So if you look at, at the comprehensive user guides, for example, also for the learning agreement, there it is indicated this should be the field of education closest to the subject of the degree to be awarded at the sending university. This exact same student ISCAT field is part of the data to be exchanged as part of the nominations as per mandatory business requirements that we just finalized. But in the, in this data set, we also have an identifier for the exact IIA. So in order to allow to differentiate between the ISCAT on the IIA and the ISCAT from the student, there's, there's even also the possibility to add the, the field of education from the IIA. That's of course more technically in, in the exchange when, when we will start exchanging for nominations. That's of course more technically um in in the exchange when when we will start exchanging uh for nominations. Um in order to make sure that, okay, we already have the IIA ID, which is the identifier for um an an agreement. But there might be uh different ISCATs inside the the same ID. So so this possibility uh will will indeed be implemented once um technical colleagues start working on the API updates and descriptions. Um but in the end, indeed, uh the idea is to have a differentiation between ISCAT on IIA and ISCAT uh on the level of the student to to cater for the scenario that Alexandra uh describes. I think it's also worth mentioning that in all our um user guidance that we uh highly recommend or strongly recommend to use the four-digit uh codes included in the beneficiary module because that indeed facilitates the the more easy um reporting a little bit further downstream once we have um the mobility taking place and we need to report in in the beneficiary model. So um in mandatory business requirements, this is already taken into account. Um and I hope that that answers the question.
Thank you very much, Paul. Uh Alexandra, I hope that we have covered your question. Uh if not, please. You're okay. Okay. So I suppose that, yeah?
Thank you so much, Nikolaus. Paul, thank you for your explanation. Uh I think uh there's still some homework for us to do. And then hopefully, and I'm sure things will be better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra. Yeah. The thing is that we need also to adjust, and I'm speaking from experience as an Erasmus officer, to adjust also our processes. So uh yeah, uh we need to do that and certainly there is work to do. Uh but for, you know, for the smoother implementation of all mobility. So uh I see that there is no uh question, uh live question. I see there are some avoided questions in the Q and A section. I now see just Julie Shirley raise uh the hand. So probably, uh let's go uh very quickly because we just mentioned about um probably changing the updating or changing the the processes, internal processes. There's a question from Elodia Guillamon Iborra. So I would probably ask Elodia to raise her hand and give her the floor to pose the question live probably and not just write it in the Q and A. I don't know, Elodia, if you're still with us. Just raise your hand and please uh put the question about the uh the the digital learning agreement, the online learning agreements and about the the stage of the process that they should be. Yes, you raised your hand, so I will give the floor to you just to pose your question live. And then Julie, the floor is yours. Uh so first, Elodia. Hi, Elodia. I think you can unmute yourself just to hear you.
Hello, hello. Thank you. Yes, no, the the question is, we we have um uh received a requirement for some universities asking our students after nomination and during the acceptance procedure to manage the DLA. So uh this is uh quite difficult for us to manage the DLA before a formal acceptance for our students. So what my question is, if there is some uh 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 requirement uh from EVP about uh the the moment in the procedure where the LA uh should be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Elodia. So to sum up, if there is a a question, a discussion between partners about the certain phase of the process of the mobility, student mobility, where the learning agreement should be processed, whether it will be uh after the nomination or after the application of the students at the host university. So we are asking whether there is or there should be uh some guidance guidelines from the uh commission about the exact stage of the process, right? This is the question.
Yes, that's right.
Yes.
Exactly.
I don't know if Paul, because it's a probably business requirements issue, or someone else wants to take the floor.
Yeah, may maybe maybe first of all, um I don't think it's up to EWP to regulate this. Um it might be up to uh the program, to the Erasmus program to regulate. But for me, it feels a little bit like the authority from the institution. They they can have requirements and of course, this is part of the bilateral cooperation and and discussions. But this this will definitely not be something uh to be regulated by EWP. Of course, if the whole community feels like it should be A or B, then we can we can look into that. But given that there's already uh such practices taking place, um I'm not sure if everybody will be aligned on on what the exact approach should be. And then there's another option, which is the regulatory framework. Uh the colleagues from from DJ AIAC who might also uh compliment this this uh question or this answer.
Well, maybe we don't have uh our colleagues from the the program team with us today, but if memory serves, then um the only requirements from the program side is that, you know, the learning agreement needs to be concluded uh before the mobility takes place. And certainly, it's an annex to the grant agreement. So before the student receives the the grant. Beyond that, I think the the timing and the sequence is up to universities uh according to their their own practices. And we are aware that there are some different approaches here. Sometimes uh sending universities want to start preparing a learning agreement uh, you know, before, even before the nominations. Others only at the nomination states and others only later down. So that's something that we need to be very mindful, in my view, when we move forward, that at least in terms of the processes, there needs to be a flexibility there uh in terms of this, because there are indeed very different practices across institutions. Uh but we take note of this uh this question and it's something we can also share with colleagues internally if there's something further there that we need to look into. Uh but thanks for for raising this. It's a very important point indeed.
Thank you, Paul and Harper. Uh I I would second uh this uh this answer to the question as also in Rasmus plus officer. Uh I and I think probably we need to make clarification here for all colleagues that uh the implementation is mainly technical. There are more business requirements, business processes that are up to universities and partners to decide. So this uh implementation here is not meant to cover the whole workflow. If I'm wrong, please do correct me. But this is the the idea, the aim, to provide tools for making this easier, but not to regulate everything. It's not probably the cause. It will be a huge workload for all colleagues in the DJ colleagues and also the partner universities to regulate everything from start to the end of the mobility. If there's also flexibility for partners to uh arrange things and to discuss these these things, uh at least from my point of view.
Exactly. That that that's basically this, because we also acknowledge that in in various institutions in various countries, there is different reporting uh burden and processes. So we cannot regulate from A to Z.
Thank you, Alex, for confirming, not to be wrong here. So uh the next colleague uh who has asked the floor is Julie Shirley. Uh so Julie, the floor is yours.
Hello, uh can you all hear me properly?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh my name's Julie Shirley. I'm managing IIA's at University of Zegen. Um and I just um have a quick question clarification wise um regarding the hiding versus deletion topic on IIA's. Um because um as the answer was given, I think that does not really um reflect our our problems we have. We are using um QS MoveOn. Um and we have a lot of IIA's which are no longer needed due to technical reasons. And um as has been stated, um it's like weird to hide or delete the IIA once it had been approved. Um these IIA's are all datasets which have been either uh not approved at all or from one side and there has have been some technical issues and we had to like roll up the whole process and everything had to start from the beginning. So there is some kind of approval going on somewhere in the system, but it has never been um never been completed. And so this is kind of like we have a lot of data corpses to to uh call them, uh call them that. So um my question would be, or this clarification would be um this mutual approval. I mean, of course, um I um an IIA which has been completely approved on both sides. I don't want to delete that in any way because we need that, yeah? Um but all of these IIA's which had problems in the process, which didn't work and the providers told us to do a new version and to just discard it. I cannot delete these as well. So um I have problems deleting these. Um I think, but which should be deleted and which should be the user case uh here. So could you maybe clarified on this um, yeah, question of mutual approval? Thank you.
The mutual approval approval means that the IIA, let's say we have partner A and partner B, mutual approval mean that partner A approved the copy of partner B and partner B approved the copy of partner A. And on the technical level, it is recognizable in some way. Uh you probably both partners keeps so-called snapshots of those of the copy which has been uh of the copy of the partner's IIA which they have approved and the so-called hash, which is kind of a technical signature of what have been approved. And the same is on both sides. And uh this is of course some technical, these are some technical details. However, every system should be able to recognize and differentiate between IIA, which has been fully processed, meaning both partners approve, or the one which is still in progress. And those in progress can be deleted. And if there are some issues which are not clear for you, what what is the status? But unfortunately, we cannot help. You can only ask your provider. Why? Why is that particular case? IIA is not, we are, I'm not able to delete it. If anyway, in my opinion, this has not been yet, uh this has not yet been fully processed. So you have to ask the provider and if the answer is unsatisfactory, you can always ask for explanation via uh service desk. So we can even uh approve the provider and try to find out whether the implementation is fully um correct. As I know, QS MoveOn already tested positively, so it should. Maybe your interpretation is uh not the proper one, maybe. Well, this has to be investigated.
Yeah.
Case by case, uh unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Theoretically, this all is is like perfectly understandable, but I think there are definitely problems in the practical um turnaround of this. Yeah. So thank you very much. Yeah.
Just a small remark. I think that now, after the second of April, when we launched version seven point O IIA's, uh really is a good time to look into what we have in the system and clear uh object by object, really, to make sure that we keep the data which is consistent and both partners agree on what is seen on the site.
Yeah, and just keep talking to the provider like every day.
Talking to the provider every day, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Julie, I think that Paul could probably add something to this one. Uh Paul?
Yeah, I I just want to to make a distinction um between what EWP regulates and how EWP says things should work, which is part of of you can you can read the user guides on how things should work in theory. But of course, there's a limit to to uh the extent that EWP can can dictate, as it were, how the local implementation behaves. And in in this case, MoveOn is the local implementation. So here it's very important, I think, uh for clients indeed to raise questions like today, get the answer on, okay, this is how it should work uh based on the EWP standards. But we 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 don't have control to a certain extent on how it's implemented internally because um probably MoveOn will support uh delete in testing scenarios. But if it's not catering for the user needs and in what kind of scenarios you can delete in agreement, then then this is very important to indeed uh also also speak to provider. And I would also recommend to use the user groups to exchange this kind of 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 practices. So you have a stronger voice um when also taking it up with the provider. Because I also see in chat some colleagues that and and the former colleague who was who was complaining about this revert deletion is not working properly was also from from one specific provider. So here I think it's very important for us as well to identify via the service desk, via the via the uh user groups. So then also um in the local implementation, uh some changes might be needed.
Thank you, Paul, for the feedback. I think Julie, you're covered probably, yes?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um yeah, so the user group is always is is really helpful. Um yeah. But for MoveOn, there can be, there should be more participation. You're exactly right, Paul. Yeah.
Good to know, Julie. Thank you for your feedback. And so let's go to the next colleague that raised her hand. I think it's Rosa Sotcha, if I'm pronounced it correctly. So uh Rosa, the floor is yours. We hear you.
Yeah, can you hear me? Ah, great. I'm Rosa Saka from the Berlin University of Arts. Um I want just to come back very shortly to the question from LOD about the DLA um during the application process. Because um as a arts university, we also have music study program. And when they apply for Erasmus, they apply at the same time to three-part university because the acceptance uh rate is very low. So they um upset, um they can apply a three university. And this is very often that they ask for the learning agreement on the application. This mean it's also EVP questions, because then they should send out three learning agreement at the same times. So um I this will be good to have a kind of regulation to understand at what point the learning agreement have to be sent out because I don't know if it's technically possible to send out three different learning agreement through EVP at the same time. I don't think it's the goals of the EVP. Yeah, so just um to underline that there is also other problems on um this kind of um questions, yeah, that we also have the same problem that LOD have. We use MoveOn, so for for sure, it's a third party uh provider. And we are trying also to organize with them how to do it, but um it's also a topic that should be discussed in EVP. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Rosa, and sorry for mispronouncing your last name. Sorry for mispronouncing the last name. So uh I don't know who wants to answer that. Uh if I get it right, just to clarify, the question is that during the application process, you ask your students to prepare three learning agreements?
Um we don't, but usually our partner university where the students apply and they apply at the same time at three universities, they require a learning agreement.
So we apply to the host universities.
Yeah.
At the same time.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very specific for music studies programs, so you probably don't have in other studies programs, but in music, I promise, it's normal.
Okay. Although I feel that it's not EWP connected, this one is probably more of a decision about the business process of the university. So probably it it should change there something and not, you know, adjust the EWP to these three um simultaneous uh learning agreements at the same time. But please, colleagues, feel free to to comment on that. Uh I don't know, Paul, probably, yes?
Yeah, if I if I understand correctly, uh there's there's three different institutions, potential host institutions. Uh so one learning agreement per host institution, because that is compatible with EWP indeed. What is not compatible uh is that one student for one and the same institution has three learning agreements. Although, uh and it's also related to one of the questions in the chat, I guess, every now and then students create a new learning agreement because the 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 process gets gets stuck somewhere um which which is also something we need to look into, for example, via the service desk. But I I I don't see how with EWP, we can we can cater for for this use case differently than we do now that we just support the possibility to, because I I imagine in the paper world, as it were, you also had to create three learning agreements for three different uh institutions. So here we just facilitate that via EWP, you can exchange the the learning agreement in a digital manner. Um and it doesn't go for any further than that. But I might have misunderstood the question.
Rosa?
Yeah, no, it's it's right. Yeah, I mean, if it's possible with EWP, I mean, of course, with paper, we also have three paper, three learners agreements. Just if the process allowed to do it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosa.
To be clear, it To be clear, it it is allowed if it's different institution indeed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you as well. Uh so uh the next colleague raising uh her hand is Daniela Slabova. Uh so uh Daniela, the floor is yours for your question.
Uh hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
I am uh from Prague University of Economics and Business. Uh my question to these colleagues um about the learning agreement uh being required during the applicant nomination process. Have you asked your partners why they require so? Because maybe maybe the process can be can be can be amended, uh why they request that? Um that will be my question to your colleagues, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniela, for the question, although it's a question from for an attendee. Uh I suppose that it's been uh um a process that has been mutually agreed upon because it's between two partners and so someone uh requires for this in the nomination process. Uh this is why uh there there was also mentioned that probably at this point E W P is not so much involved and it should be a renegotiation of the process with the partner universities that you engage. Uh so uh I suppose the question, the the answer is that that to do it, probably there is already a discussion and an agreement between between them. I don't know if you have a question about implementation of uh so so can colleagues can reply to that about uh the learning agreement, the dislearning agreement, something like that? You still hear us, right? Daniela?
I do, I do, sorry. Um yeah, that the question like, because then what I understood from Rosa is that the students, their students are asked to create three learning agreements, but then the student is eventually accepted only to one university. So two are created in vain. Uh so again, why why the partner requires that?
No, probably it's a question that uh it would be answered another context to discuss, but probably there's something from the other side. Uh an internal process, you know it better, uh that we all have our internal processes and from some reason there's a decision to uh require for certain documents at a certain stage and not on another, while it might not be so easy for the partner universities. So uh this is also, I think, E W P is a very good opportunity to renegotiate also business processes in general and make the mobility and cooperation collaboration smoother. Uh so thank you, Daniela, for the question. Um I don't know if we can, we have fifteen minutes uh to finish with this one. Uh so probably we can go to the chat, uh to the questions. I'm sorry for the noise, if you hear that, probably you hear it. Uh it's uh I nothing to do. So the next question is about, it's from Inga Riharda uh from in the Q and A section. Uh I don't know, Inga, if you want to take the floor and ask your question live, if you're still with us? Uh or I can just read it? You can raise your hand and we can uh give you the floor to ask your question. Inga Riharda? No, probably, okay. So I will, I'm going to ask for Inga. So uh is there uh an overall of uh overview of how many universities really cannot use the digital tools due to technical issues? And how many uh are just unwilling to change the processes? I don't know if we have some data about that. Uh I don't know if someone can uh uh answer that?
Well, I I don't have a very scientific answer to that question. Uh but I think that, yeah, it it is, it is a bit of a mix. We we see still that uh technical issues are still impacting uh the usability of certain systems. And also, uh for some universities, especially those that are investing in the development of in-house systems, you know, they are uh facing a bigger challenge to to catch up and be ready with all of the functionality. Uh but what we've also seen is that there is uh some proportion of the community that either is not, has not taken the time to become acquainted yet with the tools. So there may be a little bit holding on to uh former processes. And then there is also um some universities that have tested tools and can use the tools without any technical issues, but their internal administration and how that is organized has not been adapted uh as needed to the digital reality. So there are different um situations out there. Uh and here we simply need to continue, I think, to do what we can to support each and every institution, to overcome whatever obstacle they are currently facing, so that everyone is ready to actually use the processes as soon as possible. Uh and this relates also to the discussion around the mandatory business requirements, which we are sharing now with the community, even if there is more work to be done in terms of defining technical implementation and getting all systems ready. It is a chance for you to see what, where are we heading with these processes? And that you can actually reflect internally and see, are we ready to to use them? So once the system is ready and we are able to test it, we are also ready from um our administrative side uh to actually implement the processes. Uh and then, of course, uh in terms of those that simply, you know, for for lack of a better word, haven't had the time yet or ability yet to become acquainted with the tools. I, there are a lot of small universities out there that where there's maybe one colleague managing Erasmus Plus from A to Z and uh only has a handful of students and it's just a ten percent of their job description. Uh for this colleague, it, of course, it's a huge challenge to find the time to um get acquainted with the tools and actually start to use them. And of course, until now, there has been flexibility to cater to everyone's needs so that there has been the possibility to just continue to use the the current uh processes or or paper-based processes. But we have created an onboarding guide and through the E W P user groups and through the work of relationship managers and also through the cooperation with E W P champions. What we are working on is to have more meetings and more workshops where we can reach out to different universities that are in a different place and need different kind of support to take the final steps to actually start using E W P exclusively. Uh so that will be uh, I cannot give you the figures of the proportion, but I think that we have a good feel of what's, what are the different challenges and we're doing whatever we can to try to uh address those and and offer the support that we can.
Thank you very much, Harper. Uh so I don't know if there is uh anyone else wants to raise his or her hands and pose a question live?
Just a very small remark.
Yeah.
Indeed, on what 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 Harper was saying, like this was perfectly illustrating the situation. And uh maybe I can just on top of it, add also the link to the assessment reports that we are having uh on annual basis and basically that that is trying indeed also to illustrate the situation that could also be of uh of help in um, yeah, making sense of the situation.
Thank you, Daiga, for this addition. I have one, uh I'm going back to the Q and A because we are talking about requirements, business requirements. There is a question, a pointed question from Julian Horman about the mandatory business requirements for nominations and whether they are final or there there is a way to be updated uh uh if there is overwhelming feedback of users uh to change some things. Uh so I don't know if uh we can, as I I see, there is, it's an ongoing process. So feedback is welcome. Uh I don't know who wants to take the floor? Alex, probably, I don't know, yeah?
Yes, sure. So uh of course, currently, we we have consolidated the mandatory business requirements uh after a consultation with the community and the consultation continues, which means that we'll be happy to hear from your feedback. Um however, that's, we can also not uh change uh all the time the mandatory business requirements. So let's take this uh the suggestions, this documents as uh as a as a way forward. But of course, any feedback is is always welcomed.
Thank you, Alex.
And maybe here Harper would like to to comment on some future actions that are also foreseen.
Well, I I can certainly, I mean, with the with the digital system, I think that we can never say the system is finalized. There is always a room to to improve and adapt and it will be, it will continue, I think, for forever, that we will always have a dialogue with universities to see what can be improved. So feedback is always appreciated. But this is now what we have concluded and and we will work on this basis now from here on out. But of course, uh your feedback is very much welcome. But there are also other issues that we want to look into further. There was a question I saw in the chat asking, you know, what what actions will be taken to maybe uh make the L A process uh even smoother and get more universities to exchange uh learning agreements? So I think this is what Alex is hinting at, is that we will be now starting also a discussion around L As to take another look at what can be further improved in the in the process there. I think for the most part, uh learning agreements have been functioning functioning well in terms of, you know, interoperability, technical interoperability issues have been uh not uh not that extensive. Uh but we need to take a look at things like the administrative contacts and certain, for lack of a better word, quirks in the process that is not contributing to the efficiency gains that we want to see. So for example, one issue is that sometimes learning agreements are being rejected uh because of incorrect information there that sort of relaunches the process and can create a bit of a of a burden on the student and of the staff uh of their sending and the receiving. So now um in the in the spring months, I'd say we will be having discussions uh soon in the user groups and also with our in within our governance forums. So that's something that we will be focusing on. And also in terms of version seven, of course, we will continue to monitor that. Uh we want to hear from you if uh if there's something not functioning as it should be so that we can follow it up very closely. Uh I'd like to say, you know, relationship managers, uh we cannot solve the problems themselves, but we can do uh whatever is possible to listen, report and follow up on problems so that we have a good overview of what is the situation. So I would say uh our focus in terms of community consultations in the coming weeks and months would be on learning agreements and and version seven. Uh but I don't know, Alex, anything to add there or all clear? Thank you.
Hey, thank you both. Uh and I don't know, Paul, you want to add something? Um.
No, I I just want to reiterate uh what Harper said, that it's super important that colleagues join the user groups, that they engage in the discussions and the consultations. Because of course, once mandatory business requirements are are finalized and technical specification is is modified, this is a very um, this is not a a process easy to change and then to say, ah, we still need this on top of that or we still need that on top of that. Because it's also crucial for E W P and for the universities exchanging in a digital manner to have stability in the network and in the APIs. For example, for um the providers, they also need to redevelop and redevelop and redevelop. And therefore, it's super important that uh all colleagues join the channels that are available for them, for the IRO colleagues, that is, the the user groups, and engage in the discussions ongoing there uh in order not to be confronted with 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 issues uh later on in the process. So just a warm um warm welcome to all of you that did not yet join the user groups. And I also saw a comment somewhere that the messages disappear in the user groups, which is also something uh we are looking into. Um and yeah, once again, the user groups are the official governance body as well for the or part of the official uh body from from the IRO colleagues. So a warm invitation to to join and we will share the link here uh in the chat as well for those who are not yet part of it.
Thank you very much, Paul. I think that this uh last comment also replies to Mark van der Kolk uh question about the history in the user groups because now the functionality in the pre-version of the tool that it's been used uh doesn't give thirty days uh history. So uh good to know that and I hope that it will be also solved soon. Uh and I think also that the previous comments from uh Harper and Alex covered the learning agreements, changes of the learning agreements issue uh mentioned, brought up by Martina Beer. So um still, we are, we have five minutes, any more questions?
I think uh also Yanina wanted to add a comment.
Okay, okay, yes.
Just a very short comment, I wanted to second what Paul said, that of course, discussions are welcome, but on the other hand, on a technical level, at some moment, we have to start uh cha- making changes in the specifications. We have this mandatory business requirements, which now have to be translated to the technical language. And after that is done, after it this is consulted with the provider, we need time for implementation and the implementation takes a long time and there means a lot of effort. And making changes at that phase is very, very difficult and costly. Just bear that in mind.
Thank you, Janine, for the clarification and for giving the whole picture of the process. It's not something simple, it's more complicated and at different levels. So colleagues uh should have this in mind, of course. Uh and nevertheless, provide their feedback and provide what they need and do what they want to uh be done in the in the requirements of the business requirements of the E W P uh implementation. Uh I see no hand raised. Um I don't know if we can probably uh reply to one or two up for questions for the remaining time. Uh so a question about deleting online agreements in the dashboard, uh if it's possible to delete them. But I think this is probably something that will be uh implemented probably next uh basis, I'm not quite sure about that. Um. Yes, uh Daiga?
Um yeah, maybe can I jump, I can jump in here because, I mean, in general, like what what can be deleted? This is, this has to go in line with the mandatory business requirements because of course, the moment when it's a big network and and I mean, it's always two partners involved, then this is the key uh key aspect that then needs to be stipulated. And the second layer here is uh is indeed also what kind of documents then are needed for the audit trail. And yeah, I I I think that indeed, sometimes maybe the situation is such that it would be nice to maybe clean some 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 cluster there. But but then again, like if if they would be required for the audit trail, then uh then there will be certain limitations for that.
Thank you very much, Daiga, for the clarifications answering. Um. Let me see, um. There is a question from Elena about the strategy to increase the number of L As being completed via A W P. So uh the question is, what will be news? Institutions will be more motivated to use E W P in this context? Uh so uh it's a little bit related, more or less related with the priorities for twenty twenty four. I don't know if we want to uh answer this here uh live. Um. Some from the colleagues to take up uh, feed it up. Harper, probably?
I'm very sorry, I, there's a bit of noise outside, I didn't hear the question properly.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. So it's Elena and the question is, now it's the noise that I told you before, sorry about that. So it's about the strategy to increase the learning agreements, the number of learning agreements exchanged and completed via A W P. Uh so if there are going to be anything new, so institutions will be more motivated to uh use.
Oh, yes.
Be for them, yes.
Exactly, yeah. I think that this is indeed relates to what I mentioned before. I mean, on the one hand, uh we will be organizing, you know, workshops and and uh, you know, support guidance, uh trainings, everything we can on the communication uh and support front. And then also in parallel, we're looking into uh what can be improved in the processes so that they are overall uh smoother. Uh so indeed, this is uh what we can say for now, I think. And now the, hopefully, things will become clearer uh soon on what concrete actions we will take. But we are looking into this for sure. So we will find ways to uh motivate colleagues to exchange learning agreements. Uh. So I see also, yes, and we're also organizing, I see Alex mentions here that we're also organizing some national level events. Uh because what we think is also very crucial is that it's not just the colleagues in the International Relations Office that they're sort of driving forward this process by themselves. We want to have a more broad uh national level dialogue as well with maybe ministries and national agencies, universities, developers altogether there so that we can also put some targets and actions at the national level as well. Uh and I hope that this will be something that will be useful to propel uh the community forward. So a lot of things that we're planning to try to support the adoption of L As for sure. We know it will not happen by by magic.
Thank you very much, Harper, great news. And we will be waiting for this to be organized and happen. So I think that we have no more questions. Uh it was a very great, great meeting. Um would like to thank you all for joining the attendees, of course, the panelists uh for being here and answering to all these questions live. Please do not forget to sign into the E A S K newsletter. Do not forget to register for the upcoming uh Rasmus Goes Digital webinar on the fourteenth of May. Uh and we will be in contact. Thank you all for joining us. Have a great day, see you all soon. Have a great day. See you all soon. Bye.
Thank you very much, Nikos, for the organization and everyone. Bye bye.